12, if you'd please rise and pledge the allegiance with me.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Good evening, council, and good evening, staff, and good evening, citizens. Thanks for being with us this evening. If we can please have the roll called.
Here.
Ms. Gardner is absent. Mr. Kalin? Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mayor Bruck?
Here.
Thank you, council.
And we don't have any validations of notices of special meetings. If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. If I can have a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Webb on the second. Thank you, Mr. Webb. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The meeting agenda is adopted. We have a proclamation this evening, and we have several individual citizens here for appreciation certificates. So why don't we get started with the proclamation first. Vice Mayor Snyder, if you'd please do the honor of reading the proclamation. And we have Mr. An Do, who's the chairman of the Vietnamese-American community of Washington, D.C., Maryland, and Virginia, here with us this evening, who's going to be receiving the proclamation. So feel free to come up to -- I think they may be out in the back, so why don't we just wait for just a moment.
Mayor Bruck and members of council, I was just going to introduce Mr. An Do and Mr. Thao. And Mr. Do represents the Vietnamese community of Washington, D.C., Maryland, and Virginia, and we're very glad to have him here tonight. And I know the mayor and vice mayor were up at the Eden Center to celebrate Tet on Sunday, and there was a flag ceremony today honoring the flag of South Vietnam, right alongside the American flag, along with Tet celebrations today and a wonderful lunch. And so I just wanted to introduce them to the city council, and they'll be here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us this evening. Vice Mayor Snyder, if you would go ahead and read the proclamation, please.
Thank you. Whereas the Lunar New Year, known by the Vietnamese-American community as Tet Nhuyn Don, is an important and popular celebration in the City of Falls Church, and whereas Vietnamese communities all over the world are observing Tet by gathering with family and friends, paying respect to ancestors, and beginning the new year with renewed spirit, and whereas 2012 is the Year of the Dragon, a symbol of good fortune and a long and prosperous life, and whereas the City of Falls Church is a wonderful place to live and work because of the rich diversity of cultural heritage that exists in our community. Now therefore, the mayor of the City of Falls Church--
In witness thereto, I set unto my hand and caused the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed on the 23rd of January. And I therefore, Mayor Bruck, the mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim January 23rd as Tet Nhuyn Don Day in the City of Falls Church, and extend best wishes for a prosperous and peaceful new year to all in our community, including our good friends at the Eden Center as well. Thank you very much. If you'd please rise, and if there's any words that you'd like to say, please take the time.
The mayor, the council members, it's very great honor for me to represent the Vietnamese community to be here, to get your proclamation, stating that the Tet Nhuyn Don is the January 23rd. But I would like all of you to realize that this year, the first day of the Lunar New Year falls in January 23rd. But next year may be different. Yeah. This year, we have the Tet earlier than last year. Last year, we had it in February. So hopefully, we will get another proclamation for next year and follow years, something like that. Yeah, we appreciate your hard work on your proclamation. Thank you very much, and hopefully, in the future, we work together to make Eden Center Vietnamese community and Fort Worth City better life, better place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing our developing relationships with our neighbors and also our friends in the Vietnamese community. So thanks for being here with us this evening. If you'd please join me for a photo with all of council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Wyatt's been practicing. Thank you very much. Thanks again. I just wanted to thank you, a special thank you to Veronica for getting the proclamation together. Thank you, Veronica. And Wyatt, thanks to you as well for spending the time the last two days up at the Eden Center and meeting with our folks in the business community there as well. So thank you, Mr. Shields.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, before we go on to the next one, just to again express my -- the fact that we're deeply honored by our guests here this evening. And at the Eden Center yesterday, again, as every time I've been there, it's just an amazing, wonderful experience with wonderful businesses, and they're a key part of our city, and we want to bring those bonds as close as they can possibly be because we so much value what the diversity that our community represents. So it's particularly an honor to be here with the council tonight and recognizing that. Thanks very much.
And I'll also make a bit of a plug. I thoroughly enjoyed the festivities yesterday, and I know the vice mayor, as well as the city manager, were with me as we were enjoying the festivities. And for council's note, I do eat things other than granola bars and power bars to get me through the day. So Bernadette and myself did have the opportunity to eat at the Eden Center last night and had another wonderful meal there. So I would encourage folks in the community in Falls Church, and also fellow council members and staff, to really take advantage of the great asset to the community that we have in the Eden Center and the surrounding Vietnamese community and businesses that are throughout our city. It really is a great community asset that we have. So thank you very much, and Mr. Shields, for getting this together this evening. And again, Veronica, for bringing forward the proclamation as well. I have several certificates of appreciation to former board and commission members this evening, specifically Wanda Howard, Robert Butchgau, and Tom Kay. And I'd like to -- what I would propose that we do is have everybody come forward at the same time, but I'd like to take a moment just to read the work that they've done on behalf of the city. So first is Wanda Howard for her dedicated volunteer service to the City of Falls Church, specifically the Falls Church Cable Corporation Advisory Board from November 1998 through October 2010. And the city council, it reads, "The city council is grateful to its many citizens who volunteer their time to serve the city's boards and commissions to help make Falls Church a better place to live, work, and to do business. As the board's longtime treasurer, your skillful, frugal, austere management of the board's finances was an invaluable asset, especially during periods of change and growth. By dedicated effort, you have contributed significantly to the future success of the City of Falls Church." I'm going to go ahead and sign that, and then invite you all to come forward, and feel free to say a few words, and we can all do a photo together. Next is Mr. Robert Butchgau for his dedicated volunteer service to the City of Falls Church, specifically the Economic Development Authority. From February 20 -- from February 2004 through August 2010, "The city council is grateful to its many citizens who volunteer their time to serve on boards and commissions to help make Falls Church a better place to work, live, and do business. Your contributions to the newly incentives in the branding, marketing, and promoting the city are especially appreciated. By your dedicated efforts, you have contributed significantly to the future success of the City of Falls Church." And finally, we have Mr. Tom Kay for his dedicated volunteer service to the City of Falls Church's Long Range Financial Working Group. From December 2009 through September 2010, "The city is grateful to its many citizens who volunteer their time and serve on boards and commissions. Your contribution of time and expertise while working with the city council and management to address the city's long-term financial planning needs and to create a powerful financial analysis tool are especially appreciated. By your dedicated efforts, you have contributed significantly to the future success of the City of Falls Church." Thank you, Tom. If you'd all please come forward, feel free, if you'd like, to say a few words, and be honored to present you with the certificates.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. It's unexpected, but appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you very much for recognizing our service. Thank you.
Please, if you'd come forward, I'd love to present these to you with all of council. Okay, we are on to oath of office to new boards and commission members. Do we have anybody who's here to be sworn in? Okay. I don't believe we have anybody coming forward. Then we are on to receipt of public comments. I have one speaker slip, but I'd like to give the opportunity first to do the open space report, followed by the library board of trustees' annual report, and then we will turn to public comments. So if we can start with Mr. Charlie O'Hara, who's going to be providing us the 2011 open space report.
Good evening. Charlie O'Hara, 2717 Welcome Drive in Falls Church. I'm the chair of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. You have before you or should be included in your package our written report, which was provided last week. As you may know, the open space -- the open space acquisition task force was established by council in 2004. After many meetings, they issued a report, and it was determined that there be an annual report on behalf of the committee. The committee has been since been assumed into the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks, and we've had the pleasure of submitting our reports to you for the last five years. Not much has changed in that time. We've had some acquisitions, mainly it's been some small portions of parcels as necessary to add to the parks, a couple over on -- one of them on -- we did it Lee Street, a small portion of that property. There's also one that's not here. Read also on the back of Cheryl Avenue, there's a portion that's being added to the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park, which will be used for the open -- the daylighting of that stream when that project moves forward for the master plan implementation. With regards to moving forward, we have priorities that the board has determined, including the additional of the addition of an additional rectangular playing field. As you all are aware, we are in dire need of more spaces for our sports teams, the youth. We've, you know, had Madison Park be renovated to the use of those fields, but even with that, we're lacking in that space. There's a couple ideas we've proposed as we move forward. One is with the sale of the Pendleton House. We've added some portion of that property to the park, and we believe that another field could be added there in the future. We also feel that possibly with the solution to the parking problem at Roberts Park, that field could be renovated to include a rectangular playing field for the younger kids. We also have other ideas we've thrown up and had initial discussions with, and that is partnering with either Arlington or Fairfax for the use of one of their fields, or the reconfiguring of Larry Graves Park to serve a better need. Right now, there's two softball fields there, which are not under the city's control, but, you know, possibly with some discussions with Fairfax County, there could be another rectangular playing field put there. Those are all items to be considered as you move forward with regards to budget and planning. With regards to other items that the open space task force considers to be important, one is the linkages and the travel ways around the city. You should be receiving sometime this year the pedestrian bicycle and pedestrian task force report, which will be then looked at by the committee. We've had some input with regards to it, but that'll be important in determining what are linkages and connections with regards to the parks, the schools, our commercial and retail areas, and that'll be important as we move forward, and there may be opportunities for open space acquisition in connecting those linkages. We also feel it's important in the connecting the linkages that we look at our existing parks and see if they're adequate, they're easily accessible. And we focused over the last several years on two of those. We feel that with regards to Roberts Park, thought should be given to an acquisition point or an access point off of either Poplar or Lee Street or Spring Street, so that right now, the only real access is off of Randolph Street, which means if you're trying to get off of the Poplar Drive area, you got to go all the way around. We feel either an easement or an acquisition should be looked into with regards to either Poplar or Spring, so the park can be acquised from that side. And also with regards to, we have an approved site plan. We're moving forward at some point when the money becomes available to expanding West End Park. The design's a beautiful design. We look forward to implementing that. But one thing that we think is necessary is to have an acquisition, an access point off of Falls Avenue to that park, and you should consider the acquisition of an easement or the direct acquisition of land to make that access easily. And as we move forward, as development starts again, you know, we feel that one of the considerations to be given in the improvement of site plans or applications is the, you know, the addition of funds to the open space acquisition. We've used some of the funds that was initially allocated. We haven't had any of that money reallocated, and we understand it's a difficult time. But as the economy improves, we think that also thought should be given to replenishing the open space acquisition funds so that when things become available, we're able to move forward. One of the reasons the open space acquisition committee was set forth initially was to create priorities and to enable us as a board and you as a council to move quickly if opportunities become available, and we should still be considering that as things become available in the city as our economic development improves. Be glad to answer. Any questions yet?
Any questions, council? Thank you very much for the report. Danny, anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you very much.
The next item that we have on the agenda is the report of the library board of trustees for their annual report for FY 2011.
Good evening, council. I'm Bradley Grenand. I chair the board. I'm -- I live at 1204 Seton Lane.
Mary McMahon, library director.
You see the annual report, so I won't belabor that, but I would like to mention just one or two items from it, which might not make immediate sense to you unless we put it in context for you. First of all, we appreciate the close and continuing stewardship of council member Berry. She joins us for many of our deliberations, so we always appreciate that. The first thing I'd like to point out is that the Library Foundation has developed into a very important partner for us. This past year, they bought a second self-check reader, which speeds the checkout lines in a big way for us. And believe it or not, that's a very expensive item, so we definitely appreciated the help. They also bought a new digital microfilm reader and printer, which was a big deal for us because that, again, would have been thousands of dollars. And we definitely needed one. Our technology was getting kind of old that way. So we're looking forward to more partnership with them. The next thing I'd mention is 1,100 children registered for our summer reading program. That's 1,100 squirming little bodies, but apparently it went very well. And then in terms of children's programs overall throughout the year, we had almost 20,000 children. So I consider that to be pretty much a gold star for us. And speaking of gold stars, for the fourth year in a row, we received a national ranking. We were one of 262 libraries throughout the country, rated out of 7,500, and so we're very appreciative of that. We don't aim to try to get that. We just simply have that happen as a result of what we do, but definitely, we're pleased as punch about it. And then you may notice on the last page of the annual report, if you happen to have it available, is for the first time in quite a number of years, our circulation has gone down. There is a reason behind that. This past fiscal year, we closed on Sunday afternoons as a budget savings, and we realized going into that 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 would probably impact attendance and checkout, and it did. So we're down 5.8% over the year before. For this year, of course, we reinstated Sunday hours, and that's been very popular, and we did that at the expense of Wednesday mornings, which are quite a quieter time for us. So I have a feeling that this time next year, we'll be reporting to you that circulation is on the rise again. Do you have any questions, Bradley? Any questions? Ms. Berry?
I'm, of course, delighted with all the good news that comes out of the library and the tremendous service that you provide, not only for the citizens of Falls Church, but also for the surrounding communities. I think it's very important. The service to children and young people is particularly noteworthy, and do you have a sense of what percentage of your -- of those served live outside of the city? Do we have any number?
I don't have a specific number for just the children. I could get that for you. But right now, it's running about half of our cardholders are in the city, and half of them are out of the city. And in terms of circulation of that 400-plus thousand that circulated, half of it is city, half of it is out of the city.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the only -- the point I wanted to make, and I did not know the answer to this, is it speaks to the library as being a destination point for people, not simply a service for the -- not simply, I mean, it is a service for the citizens of Falls Church, but it's also, you know, a destination point. People travel to be -- to take advantage of the services. So it serves not only Falls Church, but obviously our surrounding jurisdictions.
I might mention that 85% of the citizens of Falls Church have a library card and use it.
Which means that within the past 12 calendar months, more or less, they've checked out, actively checked out an item. So it's a living number rather than a dead number.
And 283,000 people came in the building last year.
And Bradley and Mary, I give you the opportunity to say a few words about the e-books that we have now.
Oh, thank you. We're real excited about that. We came up on November the 16th with about 1,000 titles. We continually add new books, particularly on Friday mornings. If you're an ebook reader, the new ones will be up on Saturday morning. And we're seeing a steady growth of numbers of people using it and the number of books being checked out. We're very excited about that. In addition to that, we're looking at some other e-resources. One of them is Freegal, which is a downloadable music collection out of Sony, and you will be able to download three songs a week and be able to keep them, and that is being paid for out of the foundation money. So -- and we're looking also at online magazines from Xenio.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions by council members? Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder?
I did have a quick question, and I want to thank you and the board. You do a great job. And just as our citizens were here a few minutes ago in the open space task force, again, it's really our citizens that make this community, and thank you. It really occurs to me that the library is one of our key institutions, and I think, as council member Berry said a minute ago, a destination. And I'm wondering, do we have restaurant or business information readily available for people, brochures and things when they come into the library?
Yes, sir. We have the latest brochure that the city has put out with all of the different restaurants listed. That's always available for patrons. It's on the free, what we call a freebie shelf, and they can just pick it up at their leisure.
Is there any way to sort of make the tie-in even more than we've done so far? Is there a location where you could put the information? Is there -- I'm just thinking about how to, you know, make it a total experience, not only go to the library, but also spend some money in the businesses while they're here. Do you have any suggestions we could look at?
We'll definitely look at that, but we could do a display, things along that line, and do it on a regular basis. I can tell you that we've done some research, and we think that probably about $7 is spent by people when they come to the library, either paying fines, fees, or with neighboring businesses. And we have a lot of people, we have a lot of restaurants in a very walkable distance, and we know that people use those restaurants and other businesses.
Thanks. Wyatt, does that brochure include the map? I know we had one brochure that we did for restaurants in close proximity to the farmer's market. Is that the one that's available? Do you know?
Yes, that's the one.
Okay. Well, that's good. Maybe if we can just hunt for ways to, you know, just bring that out a bit more. But it's only a destination because of the great work that you do, so thanks a lot.
Again, just getting back to technology, since we're kind of talking about how the library interacts with economic development, maybe worthwhile even considering putting it on the city's website. I know that we've got a link to some of those resources. So if there's a way that we can cross-link, that may be a way of also just drawing people's attention to the, you know, great restaurants and businesses that we have in the city as well. And again, those, I think, would be the city's, you know, links, so it stays within the city. And we're not favoring one business over the other, for example.
We actually are now part of the city's website, so that happened last year.
Great, so it'd be a little bit easier to enter. Great. And again, I always have -- love the -- love the school. I'm sorry, I love dealing with the library board. It was my honor to have served before I became mayor, and it's great to see the good work. And one of the statistics that I found very interesting is the child program numbers, that there was quite a spike. And a lot of that is attributed to the hour changes in FY 11, it sounds like, but it really does show how much of an important asset that is to the community. So thanks again for all the work that you're doing, and also to the foundation for the work that they're putting into helping support some of the programming as well. Mr. Shields?
If I could just share an observation with the council as well, that along with all the dynamic things that are happening in the library, of programs that are tailored right for our clientele that we serve, moving into the digital age with ebooks and with Freegal and other things like that, it's a great creative team that's led by Mary. But if you drove by the library early on the morning Saturday morning, you would have seen Mary there with a shovel, cleaning up the -- getting the ice off the sidewalks and the stairs. Very soon after that, we got the whole team there with Danny Schlitt and Mike Noiz and Rex and park staff to help her. But perhaps Mary's fought so hard to make sure that all the hours, to restore the hours in the library, she sure wasn't going to let a little ice storm cut into those hours on a Saturday morning to make sure that we were open at 9:00. But thank you, Mary.
And while we're on the ice storm, I was going to hold this for comments, but I think now might be a good segue. I just wanted to thank all the city staff that we had, making sure that our city streets and walkways were safe. I think the city did a phenomenal job. I had an early morning appointment in DC, and I'll just say, Falls Church compared to some other jurisdictions I had to go through to get into the district, did an absolute excellent job, and that wouldn't be the case if it wasn't for our dedicated staff, including Mary herself, who we just learned was actually making sure that the library was open as well. So thanks to all the staff and others for making that happen. I do have one speaker slip this evening, unless council has any other questions regarding the library. The next speaker slip that I have is from Cynthia Cutton regarding-- The next speaker slip that I have is from Cynthia Cutton, regarding curtain, I'm sorry, regarding the sewer line issue. And if you'd please just state your address for the records we've got.
Shirley. Good evening. My name is Cynthia Coon. I have been a city resident for the last 36 years. For the last 20 of those years, I've lived at 407 Little Falls Street, a once abandoned property on the city's historic register, that my late, excuse me, late husband and I painstakingly restored from condemnation. One of the projects I should never have had to undertake occurred this past weekend as a result of a total sewer line failure caused by a root infestation from a London plane tree that the City of Falls Church planted at the curb just beyond my property line, directly over my sewer lateral. This tree was part of a large installation that the city undertook on Little Falls Street and Shadow Walk before the purchase of my home in 1992. The city arborist spoke with me last Friday after seeing the damage and stated that the tree should not have been planted at that location specifically because of its location adjacent to the sewer lateral. In fact, he told me the city always made sure they never planted trees over sewer laterals, and clearly that was not the case in this instance. So I was faced with a massive tangle of roots that solidly blocked a four-inch and an eight-inch diameter section of pipe leading to the main, leaving me with a raw sewage backup into my home that cost me $13,000 to repair. Let me itemize it for you. Last Thursday, a plumbing contractor was unsuccessful in his efforts to clear the blockage using a water jet snake, applying 3,400 PSI of pressure. Cost, $952. The following day, the same contractor sent a pipe into the, from my house to identify the blockage, which was located approximately 130 feet from my property, just under the city sidewalk. Cost, $528. The same day, the city's sewer video crew explored the main in front of my property with its video camera and confirmed that the eight-inch lateral from the street was 100% obstructed from city tree roots. In order to restore our sewer service, we had to hire a city-approved contractor with a quote "highway-heavy" certification to remove the sidewalk and a section of the asphalt street, undertake the repair, restore the sidewalk and the street. Cost, $11,000. Grand total, $12,480, an expense entirely attributable to the city's tree. I offer for your consideration several photographs of the tree and the pipe in question, and I also would offer you the actual section of pipe that was excavated from my sidewalk, completely clogged with the city's roots. To reiterate, this tree was planted by the City of Falls Church, resulting in personal damages to me of $12,480. My homeowner's insurance has preliminarily told me there is no coverage for this, as it was not on my property and it was not planted within my bounds. My loss is entirely attributable to the city's action. I ask that the city do the right thing and pay for the cost of what it has broken, my sewer line. I look forward to a prompt and affirmative response from the city. I've sent this in writing to the city manager. He should receive the letter tomorrow. And I will leave photographs with the clerk. I will not obstruct this with you. I'll take this home, but I'll have it if you wish to see it later. And I thank you.
Coons, thanks for raising this to our attention, and I'm going to refer this out to the city manager, who I'm sure is going to be discussing this with Richard, who's our risk manager and also head of HR. So Wyd, if you can please take this up and examine the issue. And if there's anything you'd like to say this evening, Wyd, please.
Well, I'll certainly do that. Ms. Coon, we'll be in touch tomorrow, and I'll look for your letter. But in any event, if you have a number or something where I can call you, just so we can have the discussion.
It's on the back of the photographs, my home phone.
Okay, very good. I'd prefer not to speak to it tonight. There is city policy on this, but if I could provide a report to the council as to what our city policy is, and of course, we'll work very closely with you just to go through the issues, make sure I understand them quickly, and make sure that we are following all of our normal city policies with respect to this case.
Thank you very much. Those are all the speaker slips I have. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address council this evening? Not seeing any. We are on to the next item on the agenda. I don't believe that we had any summary of written comments or comments coming in. So we are on to the report of the city manager to council. Mr. Shields?
I was going to ask the council if I could have Cindy Muster provide an update on just a legislative report from happenings at the General Assembly. And so I'll turn it over to Cindy, then I have a brief report after she is done.
Good evening, council. As we know, the General Assembly is busy in action with over 3,000 bills, so I just wanted to highlight a few that tie to your legislative program. In terms of the priority positions, which will be my focus this evening, the charter amendments has passed the Senate today on a 4-0 vote for the election changes, the two components. And the House counterpart to the charter amendment has been referred to city counties and towns Subcommittee One, but has not yet been doctored. It's not on this Wednesday's agenda, so watch and see if it's the week after. If we're lucky, maybe it'll be while we're down in Richmond. There are several bills that are going through the General Assembly that would require local elections ballots to show the party for which the individuals are registered for state and federal governments. I spoke to the Legislative Committee, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Webb, regarding that, because your charter resolution, how one gets onto local, is by petition and is specifically said nonpartisan. So since those bills and constitutional amendments did seem to conflict with council's resolution, they asked me to notify our delegation that we did not support those bills, and that has gone down to our Senator and delegate. There are numerous dangerous weapons bills that have been filed this year as in the past. There is one that is consistent with council's position, which we've seen every year, and that's to prohibit guns in libraries. It's coming out of Newport News again. We will support it because it's consistent with your package. It never passes, however. There are a predominant increase in bills, however, that are reducing the requirements that one must do to get a concealed weapons permit, and also decreasing the wait time before you can buy a second weapon, and quite a few issues like that. So I'm not anticipating that any protection in public facilities will succeed this year. In terms of nondiscrimination, there are two bills that are consistent with council's package and were what was introduced last year. One is by Delegate Scott, and the other by Delegate Plum. They would increase the nondiscrimination in hiring to include sexual orientation. So I'll be monitoring those. They haven't been scheduled for committee yet. I am not optimistic that they'll pass this General Assembly, however. Pedestrian safety and crosswalks, there's been no specific bills introduced that would require vehicles to stop at crosswalks for pedestrians. There is, however, a state code section that increases one's locality's ability to do signage and ticket if vehicles fail to yield. And it lists specific Northern Virginia jurisdictions, but the City of Falls Church was not included in that code section. So we did ask our delegation Saturday at the recent Legislative Town Hall meeting if they'd introduce a bill to include the City of Falls Church. And so we're working with them, and hopefully that will be undertaken. There are many bills related to the Governor's Task Force to reduce mandates and unfunded mandates and requirements that are making their way through, but nothing has come to fruition yet, except VML has raised an issue that they're seeing a lot of bills separate from the task force recommendation to reduce the mandates that are increasing mandates. So staff are starting to look at that, and I'll have more information for you. Also looked at FOIA. There's nothing in particular filed yet in terms of council's request to increase the ability to use technology and ensure transparency for more flexible meetings. There are some that would provide some protection for constituents and public safety personnel not to have personal information disposed. Continuing to watch VRS, there are several bills out there addressing disability benefits, giving localities the opportunity to do deferred comp, give people the option to opt out if they wanted to do deferred comp, but nothing has progressed far enough along in terms of the Governor's budget and the General Assembly's consideration of that to actually address the funding issues of VRS. With that, continuing to watch the rest of the regional position, support positions, and of course, the Governor's budget. Be glad to answer any questions or continue to follow up with council's Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Cynthia. Council, any questions for Cindy? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to business on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is, Veronica, if you don't mind actually reading that.
Item 10B1 is TR-12-01, Resolution to Adopt the 2012 City of Falls Church Watershed Management Plan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate this opportunity to be before you today after a two-and-a-half-year work on this particular project. But just to delay one moment further, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work of the Public Works crews that were out all night Friday night and all night on Sunday night to keep those roads clear. Those are very long days. They worked all day on Friday, then worked all night Friday night and into Saturday morning. Then similarly, they worked all night last night, and then worked all day today in their normal duties. So we appreciate their hard work and the sacrifice of their families. So we met last week at your work session on January 17th, and we had a robust discussion about the watershed management plan. And I'm not going to go on ad nauseam tonight about this. I will refer those who would like a more detailed discussion to go to our city's website and look at the video archive that's available for anybody to see. The presentation was made last week, and a good discussion with council was had. And during that discussion, council asked staff to put together a town hall meeting. And so in response, we would like to suggest that February 13th would be the date for that meeting, and that would be just before your city council meeting that evening. I believe that's a work session night. And we would have that town hall meeting that evening, and we would also discuss in detail with the community, both the merits and the details of the watershed management plan before you this evening. So with that said, I do want to have a little brief introduction. In July of 2009, the city council commissioned a watershed advisory committee. That was a 14-member citizen-led group to consider a variety of tools appropriate for watershed management, including policy and code recommendations, structural stormwater improvements, current and expected regulatory requirements, and funding mechanisms, and to assist the city in developing a strategic plan to ensure watershed stewardship. At the very same time, city council and the city allocated resources to hire a firm called AMEC Incorporated, which was brought on board to provide both expertise in watershed management planning as well as to help draft deliverables. The watershed advisory committee, AMEC, the city staff team have met seven times over the course of the last two and a half years. During that time, we used a series of five white papers that were written for this particular community to elicit discussion during those meetings to help draw out what's important and where we were headed with our stormwater and watershed policies. The watershed management plan before you, the draft, the final draft of that plan, is the culmination of the efforts to get during those two and a half years. And I suggest that that document offers three things. It's a document to guide our stormwater policies. It's a document to help meet our water quality obligations, and we talked last week, those are substantial. And then it's a document to provide an approach to how we're going to deal with our stormwater problem areas that are identified in the plan. There are three driving goals in the plan. The first is to reduce flooding and to improve safety and protect property. The second is to restore and maintain a healthy local aquatic ecosystem. And thirdly, to cost-effectively comply with state and federal water quality stormwater management regulations. The document itself is about six chapters, starts with an introduction and a purpose, and leads through an examination and suggestions for our stormwater management programs, watershed protection strategies, and then funding options. There are a series of recommendations, short, medium, and long term, throughout the plan, and they cover five broad areas. Our stormwater program, stream restoration and monitoring, stormwater management projects, policies and ordinances, and finally, funding. In two of those areas, there are stormwater capital projects that are identified. There are 11 projects. A list was culled down from a list of 40 identified projects down to 11. We've done this very objectively through an evaluation of each project's safety, its water quality benefit, and its cost analysis. Then AMEC and staff presented that to the watershed advisory committee, so that list was vetted and culled down to 11 projects. Those projects total, in planning level estimates, about $3.2 million. They represent probably the first five years of compliance with our Chesapeake Bay TMDL obligations, and I'd just like to talk about that for a minute. The Chesapeake Bay TMDL obligations have been moving around. We're not exactly sure, but our very best estimate is that it's going to cost us $24 million to comply by 2028. I apologize, that's 15 years from now. The way the compliance is structured today is that we have to meet 5% of our obligation in the first five years, an additional 35% in the next five years, and the last 60% we do in the last five years. So it's backloaded in terms of the obligation as we see it today. We believe that the $3.2 million identified in the watershed management plan takes us through that first five years of compliance with that program. Now, as we discussed last week, it does not address stormwater repair and reinvestment into our stormwater infrastructure. That's also an obligation that we will talk about through the CIP project. But nonetheless, the 3.2 should carry us through the obligation that we believe we're going to have for our stormwater compliance with the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. And then another big recommendation that's in the watershed management plan from the watershed advisory committee is to bundle all of the stormwater obligations in the city into an enterprise fund, and then to create revenue for that fund based on impervious cover, a fee that's charged to property owners in the city. And the watershed management plan believes that it was effective to bundle all of those in one places in an enterprise fund, and then it was equitable to charge based on impervious cover. But what I'm here to ask for tonight is that you refer this document out to boards and commissions to have their comments, solicit their input, with the hope of bringing this back before city council for adoption on the 27th of February. In the interim time, while boards and commissions are meeting on this, we will host a town hall meeting on the 13th, where we'll go through the plan, talk about the recommendations and the details that are in that plan. We'll make that known to the public, and we'll advertise in the normal venues. With that, I take any questions?
And just one clarification, Mr. Hicks had spoken to the 13th as being a work session. It's actually a regular session night, so in terms of consideration of when we have that town hall meeting, because we have not advertised it yet, and we'll do so after tonight's discussion, that would be at a regular session meeting. So we would do that before that meeting is what's being envisioned.
What time would we envision that starting?
What's the length of time that you imagine?
I would imagine an hour-long session, very similar to what we did for the stormwater event discussion that we had back in October. So we could start at 6:00 or 6:30.
So we would start that at 6:00 or 6:30, and we could settle on that. But what But what we're trying to do is make that a night where council members, if they're interested, can be there without a big change to schedule, and I think we also are likely to get a bigger turnout if people know that, you know, it's on a set night when there is a meeting.
All right. Ms. Barry?
Yeah, Bill, when we're talking about how to fund the enterprise fund, you know, it seems intuitive to focus on impervious surface as a, you know, as a tool. But has there been any serious discussion about turning to the citizens themselves and talking about landscaping, gutters, containment, rain gardens? I mean, is there, because, you know, we could rip up the driveway and, you know, build something else and end up not actually getting any net gain on, you know, impervious surface. I was just, I mean, I realize it's a little awkward, and it's not nearly as neat as a impervious surface ratio, but is there any genuine effort to reach out to the citizens and see what they can do to mitigate this particular issue?
As we move ahead, if we moved into an enterprise fund structure, and if we had a fee based on impervious cover, those sorts of things are exactly part of the solution. I like to think about stormwater management as a toolbox of a whole bunch of things. And there's no question that it's going to be partnerships with our community, our residents, our commercial businesses, and it's going to be things that we do on the properties that we control, our right-of-way, our city hall, campus. Absolutely, those are part of the solution, and there's several different ways to do it. One of the ways is through a reduced fee based on the improvements that you make on your own property. Another way to do it is to create small grants to help facilitate those sorts of things. And another way is simply to ask, to do enough outreach and education that you buy in those early adopters who are interested in making those sorts of changes. I think we've done the last. In some ways, we could do better. The other two are a little bit, they require more monies.
Ira?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The total cost of $24 million, which is to be expended by, in the end of the 15-year period, is that in constant dollars, or is that included an increase in costs going forward?
Mr. Kalin, I have to tell you, we've run those numbers before. I am pretty confident that they are in constant dollars that does not include an escalation over time, but I don't have that in front of me tonight.
Actually, that's sort of like not good news, because at a 3% inflation rate, the end of 15 years or so, it's going to be maybe half again as expensive. Plus, most of it's been left for the last couple of years. So, this is, the $24 million doesn't really tell you how much this is really going to end up costing and how it's going to be funded, because it's going to show up at the end, and then you're going to have to have all sorts of erratic rate charges. And people, you know, 15 years is not as long out as you might think in terms of the life of a city and so forth. The other issue is when you describe the criteria for selection of 11 projects, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, but there didn't appear to be a measure of the economic damage choices between the various projects. You know, maybe water quality or effectiveness of there, but there were people who came in and showed us, you know, the $10,000 damage, $15,000 damage, et cetera. Was that part of the consideration in how you selected the 11 projects?
These are, we're certainly in planning level estimates at this point, but we did try and do a very robust effort where we looked at safety, public safety concern first. I'd like to find my table, and I can certainly make this available at the town hall meeting where we go into more detail about just how those projects were selected. But it was based on safety first, whether or not safety and a water quality benefit could be found, whether, and safety was ranked based on whether it was property or life in danger driving down the road, because we have lots of flooding and lots of passerby's, if it was a single-family home that we were flooding, or is it in a park? And the span of impact is, you know, the spectrum goes from one end to the other. So, we worked at it in a planning level effort, but we did not do a solid cost-benefit analysis of any one of the projects as they relate across the board. But it was, we felt like it was very objective, including cost, water quality, and safety.
No doubt that it was objective, and that's not the, it's the criteria against which you measure and what the objectivity. The way you describe safety is fairly broad, it uses a lot of things. But if you have one area, and maybe it doesn't reduce pollution as much, and maybe it doesn't provide some other scientific measures of benefit, but it's an area that 50% of the damage, total cost to the citizens is in one area, even if the project doesn't generate the most efficient reduction of removal of water perhaps compared to another area, but the economic damage is much greater, that might be an important consideration, especially for the citizens who come forward after the, as they say, these one-in-a-million-year events occur more frequently than you think. It might be something that might want to consider in that. And on the first point, I would certainly like to see the numbers that include some inflation rate. It doesn't have to be very speculative, it could be a modest 3% or something like that. So, you get a real idea of what is going to, the costs are going to be when we get to them. I think that type of disclosure would be very useful.
We'd be glad to do that. We have, what's being asked of us by both the federal government and the state is being, it's still morphing all the time, so we have not gotten a solid number, but we can absolutely work harder to provide an escalation over time.
Other council members?
I'm just going to renew my request, and I know that we were planning on doing this just on the repair front as those numbers become available and we get a better sense of that. I think council just needs to have a separate work session dedicated to the repair issues, because I don't think that we've got a good handle on that in the way ahead on those issues. And I know that there's still work being done by the contractor. Is that correct, Bill? The contractor's not done yet, or are they at this point?
The contractor's not done, no, sir.
Do we know when the contractor's going to be done with its work?
We think the contractor's going to be done in February with all the, at the end of February, with all of the video logs that we have. We recognize that this video log, there's a delta between the video logs, everything that's been logged, and our total infrastructure. So, by the end of February, there's still going to be some unknowns, but we can extrapolate.
Great. Okay. So, if we can just keep that in mind, I'd like to try to take that up if at all possible before the budget gets too ahead of us. That way, we can start thinking about the repair issues that we may need as we begin to take up the budget in the CIP. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I think those of us who attended the town hall, and I think that all the council with our citizens certainly came away with a sense of urgency about work on the city's infrastructure, and I think this begins to get at that. Secondly, the Chesapeake Bay issue is a very large one involving the federal government, the three, well, more than that, state-level jurisdictions. There's some hint that local governments have sort of been sold out, if you will, to favor other interests in Richmond, and I certainly want to see if that's the case. But obviously, we need to step forward and do what's reasonable for us to do in the longer term. But certainly on the short term, we have infrastructure that we've been investing in, but I think the storm showed that we need to ramp up the investment, so I think this plan calls for doing that, at the same time maintaining the pre-existing level of funding, so we don't do more on infrastructure. And at the same time, money that we have been putting into infrastructure ends up in the operating budget, because we may be considering an enterprise fund. So, I think we need a total look at what we've done and then where we need to go and in what timetable. And these numbers are still, I think, need to be fleshed out, and it was for that reason I felt that the citizens needed more of an opportunity to study this before we took final action on it tonight. So, with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the draft watershed management plan be distributed to boards and commissions and to the public for review and comment prior to final consideration by city council on February 27, 2012.
Thank you. If I can get a second, please?
Thank you.
That's Mr. Webb on the second. Okay, I'd like to open this item up for public comment, even though I'm sure we're going to have some extensive comments coming up. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to close this to public comment and give council the opportunity to comment on this item if they wish to at this point. Anything from council members? I'll just, this is something that I've been involved with as the council liaison to the group, so I think the watershed management plan is a good start. I think the way that the contractor worked with staff and also the committee was really a good way of, and a very good example of how some of this work needs to be done. And as far as the requirements that we're going to have by the federal government and also the state, I think those are going to be unfolding. But again, as I mentioned before, I think it's one that we need to work on now. I don't want Falls Church to be behind the ball on this one as we move forward. Two, I do think that we need to focus in on the projects that we talked about, and I think it's important for the public to get a better sense of the metrics that was put forward. There was a lot of work that went into that. And to council member, to Ira's point about, you know, was there sort of a focus on the amount of damage? What I will say is that there were some factors that were put into place. The simplest way of putting it was, you know, bang for the buck, making sure that projects that were selected also could be doable and also had a larger impact, given the dollar amounts that they would require. So, that was certainly part of the process as well, but safety was certainly one of the driving forces behind the projects that were selected. So, I think the plan is a good one. I think moving forward, how we fund it is going to be an important discussion and also focusing in on the repairs as well. So, this is an item I'm going to be looking forward to getting public comment as it moves forward, and I think it's really an issue where the community as a whole needs to dive into, get their arms around, and provide council and staff with feedback. So, I look forward to getting the public feedback on this. Any other council members wish to speak on this item? Why don't we go ahead and take the vote on, referring this out, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is consent. So, if I can get a motion on the consent, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. If I can get a second? That's Mr. Kalin on the second. If we can have the vote recorded for the consent agenda, please.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we do not have any business on the agenda. I'd like to open this up for council member comments and requests. Council, any comments or requests?
Ms. Barry?
Counsel, I'd like to report out on a couple of meetings I attended on behalf of council. Last Friday, as you may know, I'm the council representative of the Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee, and we had a lively meeting. Again, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Hicks's issue. That $24 million is a moving target. I very much appreciate what Mr. Kalin's point about trying to normalize those numbers, but every jurisdiction, our colleagues in Maryland, our colleagues in DC, everyone is struggling with trying to find out what this number is going to end up being in terms of Chesapeake Bay mitigation. I also was party to a bewildering number of, I have them all written here in my incomprehensible handwriting, but a bewildering number of Senate and House bills associated with Chesapeake Bay. I just wrote them all down and thought someday this will wash over me and I'll understand what, you know, half of them. But it's a, there's significant movement on this, and again, it's a huge issue, and I very much appreciate council member Snyder's, you know, continual pressure on Richmond and on the feds to give states and municipalities some relief on what is going to be a significant problem. So, that was the one meeting, and in the second meeting, I hope other council members joined me, but it was my privilege to be on the phone with a number of municipal leaders all over the country to receive the words of President Obama, who was seeking some input on the State of the Union address. It was a delightful phone conversation. I actually just listened. I did not, didn't have anything terribly...
You didn't tell them there were too many EPA regulations?
I should have. I should have said, listen, as long as you're at it. But it was, you know, it was just delightful to, obviously, to hear from the president, but also to, you know, to hear from colleagues all over the country as they wrestle with a number of issues that, of course, the president will undoubtedly touch on in the State of the Union address. And last but not least, I am going to be participating on Wednesday at Mary Ellen Henderson as part of the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Project, and will be one of the jurors as the young folks put together ingenious solutions to solving problems through math and engineering, so I'm certainly looking forward to that. I had an opportunity to participate last year with folks at Mary Ellen Henderson, and these are, this is a group of sixth graders who I'm sure are going to dazzle as they did last year as well. So, looking forward to that.
Other council, other council members?
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of former city council member Bob Perry. He served on city council from 1992 through 1996. In addition, served on the planning commission, was chaired the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, longtime member of the League of Women Voters, and I was honored to be able to participate at his memorial service at the Goodwin House, and I recognize as well the significant contribution to our community of his wife Nancy Perry. And my thoughts go out to the entire Perry family. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports or comments? Just wanted to report on a couple of meetings I attended on behalf of council this week. The mayors and chairs' biweekly meeting was this past Friday, and there was discussion about the various budgets and where various localities are in their budget process. So, I informed them of what some of our budget drivers were, what some of our numbers look like, and it sounds like there is some commonality within various jurisdictions, except perhaps, save Arlington on that. But everybody's kind of keeping their eye on the VML situation. Some localities, save again, Arlington seemed to be better poised on VRS issues. Apparently, Arlington, it's my understanding, the school board had been actually saving on VRS issues in order to pay back what they believed that they would be required to ultimately contribute when the bill came due. Fairfax didn't seem to quite be as far as where Fairfax is. They may have dived into some of their monies. some of their monies in order to address their fiscal situation. Arlington seems to have a good handle on it, but it's something that they're all going to be looking to as the folks in Richmond continue to meet on the VRS issues. So that issue came up. Compensation issues, I believe Fairfax has put out a report dealing with their compensation structure, not, my understanding, and I haven't looked at the report, is it's not on wages, but there are other benefits, not including wave or wage structure, but on other benefits that they have. So that should be possibly available on their website. Don't know if False Church has compared or not, I think they may have been looking at some larger jurisdictions, but it's worth city staff taking a look at and seeing if there's any, anything that we can draw from that as we begin our budget process. So those, that was, most of the discussion centered around that. We did have a discussion about the legislative front as well. Some of the jurisdictions I'll report are concerned about, the constitutional amendment dealing with eminent domain, I think that's one that we should be tracking to the extent that we can. It's not, I don't think it's great if it goes through, dare I say, for locality, so, but we can speak more about it at a later point. So that was a very good discussion, dealing with various items. We didn't speak about water, which I was glad that we didn't, frankly, but it's always good to get together with that group, so, and I believe that there's a meeting coming up in two months prior to our budget, so I'll certainly let council know and report out on that. The school board, City Council School Board Liaison Group also met this past week, and it was more of an exchange of numbers, what we're looking at, what the gaps are, possible ways of closing the gap, and what types of things we can do. So it was more of an informational meeting and gathering to provide input, and I believe that Mr. Shields and possibly John and Richard are going to be attending the school board work session, is that the 31st?
Tuesday, 31st.
To, and Mr. Shields is going to be providing some numbers with Richard, and they are potentially going to have a closed session as well with Mr. Foster. So those are some of the matters that were discussed. Ira?
Thank you. Sorry for jumping in after you've spoken. Since you said the magic three letters that get me going of the VRS, I've had a series of email exchanges with the chief financial officer of the VRS, copies were sent to Richard N. Hunter Kimble to clarify what the numbers are that the governor is recommending. It's an 84% increase in the pension cost from last year to begin to address the shortfall, which takes us of the gap, it takes us about a little less than halfway to the gap, doing the gap, so that we can therefore look forward in the future to additional large increases in the VRS teachers' pension. And I have this, say it's in writing, and it's been circulated to the CFOs of the city and the school board. They also have assumed that the burden on municipalities assumes that all teachers are providing 5% contribution. If the cities are not, if the teachers are not providing it, that is, the contribution has to include that additional 5% that we are now covering. So it's a significant increase in the burden, the way the state has actually handled it. If I am not mistaken, they have said they will increase the state portion, will provide some money from the state, but then are going to lower other transfers to the education system in the form of reduced funding for K through 12. So now you see it, and now you don't. I don't know exactly which the numbers work, but that shortfall also is being asked to be covered by the city. So we're actually getting quite a substantial increase in cost due to the state actions.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Kalin, and for your work on the VRS issues. And I know that the, one of the issues that came up, and I did inform the school board that the city manager was working on the draft options, and we're actually expecting to see them already, and just reiterated that request and asked that the school board also request that their staff work with Mr. Shields as they're coming up with the various options of tackling the VRS problem, such as it is. But that's going to be a number, that's going to be a huge driver for the schools and also for the city, so. Anything else by council members? Thank you, counsel. We don't have any minutes for this evening to approve. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. We are adjourned. Thank you all.